Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to call the Tuesday, May the 12th, 2015, public hearings and regular city council meetings in order. This time I ask if you rise for our invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I ask Councilor Sherwood, would you mind delivering our invitation?
My prayers come from the God we ask for. You come down upon us tonight, help us do things that are best for this city, enable us all to grow together. Unity and love, guidance directs us, draws all flesh from your son Jesus Christ, in his name.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please, for the seat. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 14th, 2015, regular city council meeting, Tuesday, April the 21st, and Tuesday, May the 5th, 2015, special city council meetings.
No movement.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No movement, no nay. Motion carries. Presentations, we have item A on our agenda, we have two proclamations this evening. So Brad and Andrea are here from Sound Solution. Brad, how did you say your last name again?
Hold it.
I'm sorry?
That's it.
Love it. Love it. It's gonna be a good meeting tonight. So I'd ask if you'd come up, I'm gonna sign this proclamation for you.
And that's how your dad reads me, anytime I speak.
That's it. That's genetic, that's where I get it from. I can't help it, it's his fault. So, the city would like to present you with this proclamation for Better Hearing and Speech Month. And you guys, coincidentally, they just had a grand opening, I don't know, was it eight months ago? Has it been that long?
Yeah.
Yeah, so wonderful facility, out on the bypass, hearts civilians, but we couldn't wrangle them into the city just yet. We're still working on that, by the way. But we wanted to present you with a proclamation. Didn't know if you wanted to just say a word or two, since we've got a guest audience today. Wanted to give you this and say congratulations on your month. Thank you both for being here.
Well, we certainly very much appreciate this. Just quick note, that Better Hearing Month is actually a national, I shouldn't say holiday, but basically more of a proclamation. Better Hearing Month is being recognized all across the country. And at Sound Solutions Hearing Care, what we are doing to help recognize that is we are offering free hearing tests as a courtesy to all residents. And believe it or not, I was specifically asked to make sure that each and every member here at council go ahead and get their free hearing test.
What?
You got it. Just to let you know, I mean, it is one of those things that should be checked on an annual basis. Most physicians aren't doing it. You just take it upon yourself, and we certainly would love for you to come out and see our facilities. Thank you.
Now, does your hearing test, is that the one with the beeps, where you put the headphones on and sit in the soundproof booth, or is yours differently?
That is one portion of it, yeah.
Okay. So, we do that for the fire department, and I mean, I realize how loud music going off, like totally kills your hearing. And you get to the point where you're just pushing the button because you know that the beep probably shouldn't be there, but you just can't really hear it. So, we appreciate what you do, and you got a wonderful place out there. So, hope you guys take an opportunity to go by and see him, go get your hearing checked as well.
We're there at the railroad tracks on 151. Everybody knows where Westwood Barbecue is, we're right next door.
Thank you. All right, thank you all.
Forty hours.
Oh, please.
Now he says one's another photo.
Okay. Russell always picks the day that I don't wear my blazer. Thanks, Russell. That work?
Got it.
All right, thank you all for coming. Let me sign this one very quickly. So, we have with us Chris Rollinson and Carol Singletary. If y'all would come up, did I say that wrong?
No, I said, oh, Carol's not here.
Oh, Carol's not here, you're not Carol then. I assumed you were Carol. Would you mind coming forward? So, Chris is here for Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. And his boss, as it turns out, is a dear friend of mine that is in the Liberty Fellowship with me, and so I am super upset that he didn't come personally.
Stuck with me, sorry.
I'm stuck, you're a few seconds away. So, we're gonna take a picture, and we're gonna send it to Forrest, and put it on his Instagram page and tell him what he missed. So you tell him you got a national holiday name after you, keys to the city, whatever you want.
That'll work.
You just name it. So, Teen Pregnancy Month is something, coincidentally, that is a very important platform to all people Harris Deloche. Harris Deloche has been working very diligently, and very quietly, probably, a lot of people may not have known this, on these issues. Darlington County is not in the best of places, and he would like to see that changed. And you guys, and Forrest included, Forrest is just this ball of energy, and he has been working tirelessly to lead your group. You've done some pretty amazing things, and y'all just got a recognition, last week, was it, or a week before, you got some big national recognition, I saw him post.
Oh, yes, I was gonna ask, can tell you what it was. It was for workforce parents or something.
Yeah, yeah. And you guys have a lot of fun.
We try to.
So, we wanna honor you with Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month, and I didn't know if you wanted to just say a couple of words about what you're doing?
Well, I can talk about what we're doing, but more importantly, what Darlington's doing is making some big strides. I know nationwide, teen pregnancy rates are the lowest they've ever been, nationwide, since we've been tracking them. I know there's a lot more attention to the Teen Mom TV show, and social media, and they're like, oh, it's such a big problem, that reality is, it's actually lower than it's ever been tracked. Now, we haven't tracked it since about the 80s. In South Carolina, in the last 20 years, it's down 54 percent.
Wow.
In the last two years that we've tracked them, it's about a two-year lag, it's down actually 13 percent in the state. Darlington, in that same time period, is down 19 percent. So you're ahead of the game there. And the 20-year periods are down about 49 percent, so not quite the state average, but there's a lot of great momentum going here with First Steps. They're doing some great things. They've actually got two federal grants, they're receiving money from two federal grants to work with teen mothers. And in that same time, I'll tell you what, I started in '07, used to be one-third of all teen pregnancies were repeat pregnancies, and today, it's actually, South Carolina, it's only 24 percent. So there's progress there as well, so there's a lot of good stuff going on here. Our school, with Harrison Deloche, we got a planning grant, but they're working on First Steps, and that's hopefully partly its way into a good grant by Duke Powers, interested in investing a lot of money in Darlington County. So there's a lot of great momentum.
Well, you're welcome back anytime.
Appreciate it.
And please take this back to your team, and thank you and congratulations.
You got it.
Tell Forrest we said hello. We're doing another.
Yeah.
That work?
That worked.
I took a picture of it, so I'm gonna tag him in his Instagram.
Thanks for having me.
Good to see you. Okay, item B on our agenda, parking and beautification improvements update. The lady that keeps us well-trodden is here, Mrs. Carol Ann Godden. We affectionately refer to as mom, a lot of times.
Is this right?
Come on up. She, as you know, is the committee chair. Would you mind coming to the microphone, please, madam?
Sure.
Just so we can record it.
Oh, great. Mr. Mayor Pennington and Council, as you stated, I am Carol Ann Godden, and I'm the Chair of the Parking Beautification and Business Improvement Commission. Our commission consists of five members, and in accordance with our bylaws, to be a member, you have to be either a business owner or a property owner in our district area. The other four members of the commission are Richard Porter, Emily Phillips, Steve Fagan, and our latest member, Bob Graham. We collect a special fee once a year from the downtown businesses, offices, and apartments for the purpose of parking beautification and improvement for our downtown district. Since I was here last year, we have funded the painting of the Arbor and Centennial Park. We had repair work done in the North College Avenue parking lot, and this was just a fix to get us through into the construction back there, but it was in such poor shape, we felt like we had to do something. We also share in the expense of the electrical work in the alley at the rear of Mantissa Hotel. We contributed to the purchase of new Christmas banners for the poles, and just recently, we helped fund the design and construction project for the North College Avenue parking lot. And the commission would like to thank Council for working with us to make this project come to fruition. We contributed $3,000 annually to the maintenance of Centennial Park, and actually $11,400 for the maintenance, general care, and cleanliness of the parking lots. And that figure includes the new contract that we have with the city for the North College Avenue parking lot. One of our ongoing problems that keeps occurring is trying to keep employees and employers out of customer parking places. And with new businesses and everything, this is becoming, you know, more of a problem. So, we thought it for years, so if y'all can come up with any, help us with a solution. But I would like to personally thank Shannon Morrison, and she's been a great assistance to me personally, and to the commission this year. We look forward to working with the city, realizing that parking and appearance of our downtown are key elements that are vital to our future. That's it, unless you have any questions for me?
So, we wanna thank you, because a lot of what we do is not possible without the funding that you give us. And we hope that you're as excited as we are about all the upgrades coming, especially to the parking aspect with parking and beautification, but also the beautification aspect, which is always ongoing. And thank you personally for your patience, because you're co-located next to some of the most major construction downtown, and hopefully, won't be very much longer, you're gonna have a really nice calling card right beside you, so thank you for that. And your leadership as well. Any questions on behalf of Council? Okay, madam, thank you for your service.
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay, item C on the agenda, Mr. Chastain, Director of Innovation.
Thank you, Mayor Pennington, Council, thanks for having me here. I set my priorities for February to discuss the startup Hart School program that was launching. So I come here today to talk about its evolution, its process soon to be coming to a close with the announcement of the winners, and then our lengthy process of filling these winners into our downtown storefronts. In addition to that, I'd like to talk about the upcoming Code Camps for our youth in middle school and high school this summer, and then some possible recruiting efforts that are in the works at the center, and ongoing innovators at the center. So I'll try to be brief. When I began the process, we had nine entrepreneurs who applied for the program. They were then cut to eight who made it past first review. Since then, we've had an elected volunteer judge that has, judges, excuse me, that have narrowed that group down to four. Those four will finalize business plans tomorrow to be submitted to the next round of judges. That judging, closed-door judging event will take place next Monday night here at Council Chambers. At that time, or after that time, we will have the two winners of the four finalists, and announce that on Wednesday of next week at Black Creek Arts. I hope you all receive an invitation. It is open to the public, we'd like for you all to attend, and I'm just stating that. At that event, each person from the community will receive a ballot and get to vote on their People's Choice of $1,000 cash prize, the People's Choice Award. The four finalists are retrofit Sippin Seat, Seersucker Gypsy, The Barber Shop Experience, and Mesa Forte Restaurant. Seven of the eight that made it past the original cuts plan to open regardless of winning or not in the next eight months to 12. Five currently have signed or verbal locations in mind in our downtown district, and three of those seven will be minority-owned and operated companies, which we're really excited about. Any questions on Startup Hart School, specific to anything that's taken in the past, or that will be taking place next week?
What time next week?
Six o'clock on Wednesday, Black Creek Arts.
What kind of business, minority?
So the three, two of them are restaurant ideas, and then one of them is an upscale men's barber shop lounge in the downtown community. A very unique goal of theirs is to bridge the racial divide between the white and black thirsty barbershops in our community, and have a very nice upscale place for everyone. I'm really looking forward to the presentation on Wednesday night. The other two restaurants, one has been cut, the other is in the final round.
Is there anything further?
Code Camp, just real quickly. This summer, we launched a two-week robotics in Code Camp for middle school ages 11 to 13, beginning June 22nd in the mornings. The afternoon kicks off with a Python Code Camp, two weeks long, for high school students aged 14 to 15 to 18. These will be free, and we'll be targeting students at risk. In addition to that, some things that will take in place for further education and continued outreach in education for adults, young professionals, and current business owners downtown will be a boot camp, boot camp class system that will have week to week, that will encompass topics such as marketing, social media, website development, continuing education, these programming. We've been talking with both Main Street and the Chamber, to organize and pull what is really needed in our current businesses downtown to increase their knowledge to help them run their business. Current innovators in the center, we're still working with seven. These seven entrepreneurs range from electronic vehicles for recreation use, fitness products, app softwares in Forest Street, buying and selling, golf, local food delivery systems for our Hart School community, and web-based platforms for new product launches. So exciting stuff, still working in the center, hoping to graduate by the end of the year.
Local food deliveries in there?
Yes, and a boost, and a boost down there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because I would've thought that it'd be me personally. I love.
Is there any further questions about anything that you're currently working on? If you do have any follow-up questions, you can call, send an email, or please stop.
Can we buy stock in the local delivery option now?
No, never. Thank you.
Thank you. See you tomorrow. Madam Manager, do you have an update that you'd prefer?
Some people are happy, it's, you know, when there's progress, I mean, some people are displaced for a little while. Starting next Monday, Mantissa Alley will actually close between Forest Street and the new hotel for construction, about eight to 12 weeks, then it will be closed. We have informed all the businesses and residents in that area. We have, the college is very kind, and they're letting people park in their parking lot. And then Jayden's working on a plan for dumpsters and wheel parks in the meantime. If you hear anything, we have informed residents and owners that we have to close the entire alley, except for the new stormtroop, and to redo that alley. Once the alley is complete, they'll also start working on this back parking lot, so starting in the parking lot right behind us, then they'll work on College Avenue and the parking lot across the street from there. Activity will start next Monday.
So the west end of the alley is still gonna be open?
No. Well, for now, yes.
For now, okay.
Yes, the, if it's not down already, they told me it would be online tomorrow, so it won't be blocked anymore behind the hotel. So people will actually be able to walk through in the meantime, until they've moved the middle of that.
Oh, I got you. Walk through the, I'm sorry.
That starts. The other thing is, we heard a presentation from Sam Lee several months ago regarding the hospice house and the assisted living facility. Payers still won't go with both of those, the urgent care is not because of the issues that we read about in the newspaper, but they plan to have their billing permits by July for the assisted living, and then hopefully by the end of the year for the hospice house. But things are still moving forward on that one. That's all.
Okay, any questions for the manager?
Are the unit protected, date, and it will be open?
I don't know that, I'm not sure.
Pray for no rain.
Do we know when Mr. Devine will be back, for us?
Um, he has no reason right now to come back unless you want to become given us a day.
I just want to ask about Medicaid.
Okay, if you want, you can give me that question, I can send it to you.
I would like to know if they would be accepting Medicaid for the assisted living.
Okay.
And hospice as well.
All right, if there's nothing else further for the manager, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and if there are no objections that will be received, this information's on. Bye, thank you. Moving into unfinished business, first on our agenda for unfinished business is item six, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4194, if the manager will publish the ordinance.
Sorry, it's an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and services for revenue bonds to the city of Hart School, South Carolina, and other matters related to.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the title of the presentation by the city manager. At this time, the Chair will open the public hearing. If you would like to be heard on ordinance 4194, if you will come to the front, state your name and address for the record, please leave your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing done, the Chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions on the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4194. Your motion on the floor is your second. Is there any discussion on ordinance 4194? Hearing done, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay, the ordinance passed. Item seven on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4195, the manager will publish the ordinance.
Ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and services and improvement in refunding revenue bonds to be designated Series 2015 in a principal amount of not exceeding $12 million of the city of Hart School, South Carolina, and other matters relating thereto.
Okay, you've heard the reading and title of the presentation by the city manager. At this time, the Chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4195, if you will come to the front, state your name and address for the record, please leave your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing done, the Chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain, the hearing and entertain any motions on the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass 4195. There's a motion in the second. Is there any discussion on ordinance 4195? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay, the ayes have. Item eight on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4197, if the manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Hart School City Code of Unit A zoning, Article 9, District Regulations, Section 6, E2 and E3, business zoning by the addition of Section 32, self-service storage facilities, subsection 1, A through G.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the title and presentation of ordinance 4197. At this time, the Chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4197, if you will please come to the front, state your name and address for the record, please leave your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing done, the Chair will move to close the public hearing of ordinance 4197. Is there any motions from the floor? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4197. Second. There's a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance 4197?
Yes.
Any discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see language put in, ordinance 4197, Article number 24, the list, the footage, and also, ordinance number 31, the list specific footage, and we did not get that on this ordinance.
Okay, the madam will need to put that in the form of a motion. So if you make the motion, what needs to...
Mr. Mayor, make the motion, let me...
Yes, ma'am.
Make an amendment to include the footage.
Tell me the reference, the numbers again.
Reference number 24, and also reference number 31. Because as we have it, there is no, that was an option.
24.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Somebody needs to put a number in, because that was one of the options.
So right now, as it stands, it's 500 feet, are, is your proposal to change that?
24, oh, no, so here, there's nothing here. And remember, we said we didn't know what that number should be.
So with item 32?
32.
Okay, that was, that was an amended, that's an amended item to 32, right? 321H, is that correct?
That's the B.
She's wanting to insert a number.
Oh, strike and remove, okay.
Within a certain amount of feet of residential property, I think so, I should say.
Right, right, no, I got that, I just couldn't remember where it was inserted. Okay, tell me the second part of the motion.
To include that.
Okay, so, Madam Counselwoman has made a motion, I'm going to restate it in benefit of the clerk, for an amendment to ordinance 4197, amending Section 32, 1, subsection B. Strike and remove shall not be adjacent to a residential property, and insert shall not be within, how many feet?
No, I'm not saying strike and remove.
I just ordered me to state it.
In addition to. I'm not supposed to decide what the footage should be, that, I hear that a number should be there for future references.
Okay, you gotta, if you're gonna make the motion, you gotta have some number. I don't know of any other way to determine.
It was not South's recommendation to have a number, we thought it was Harford's, so it would have to be a number.
Go with that for now, if that's, if that's the intent.
Okay.
Okay, so, 500 feet, so it's a strike and remove, shall not be adjacent to residential property to, shall not be within 500 feet from residential property. All right, that is the motion to amend ordinance 4197. Is there a second?
No.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the ordinance as, or the amendment to the ordinance? Yes, my question would be, and I asked this, I think, last week, when Ms. Kelly was here, either a radius or linear. You can go up and down the street 500 feet or 50 feet, or you can go a radius, they're two different things.
I would suggest that it be 500 feet, linear, be that way.
Up and down the street. So let the clerk reflect in the record that the intent is linear feet, per minute. I don't know if that changes in the definition or...
He just showed the word linear in front of feet, I think, I saw that.
Perfect.
That was it, I didn't see the saying, correct.
All right, is there any further discussion on the amendment to ordinance 4197? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the amendment ordinance 4197, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
Call for division on that, what is, please, might be three, three? Show of hands one more time for aye. Three and nay? Three. So, yeah. I love my parliament here. All right, so the amendment, the amendment to the ordinance is defeated. So, for the clarity of the record, let the clerk reflect that I voted against that. So, yes, ma'am?
One other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Grant was asking, there is no property on Poole Street, but it's just not limited to Poole Street that way?
That is correct, this is, this... Ma'am?
No, how is it on Poole?
Well...
But it's not limited to Poole Street?
That's a technical question, because there are residences on Poole Street, even though the address, the front of the house points to whatever the other, let's say, street sumter. Sumter, but there, it comes to adjacency, that is still considered adjacent to, I mean, that's a resident home. Does that clarify your question? Okay, so, um, if there are no other amendments to forty-one ninety-seven, and there is no further discussion, all in favor of forty-one ninety-seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
So let the record reflect that there is a dissenting vote, but the ordinance forty-one ninety-seven has passed. Item number nine on the agenda is new business, first reading of ordinance forty-one ninety-eight, if the manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to deduct the budget from the city of Hartsville, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty fifteen, and ending June thirty, twenty sixteen.
Okay, you've heard the reading and title of the presentation by the manager of ordinance forty-one ninety-eight. This time the chair will entertain any motions for approval of the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we pass ordinance forty-one ninety-eight.
Second.
There's a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
None.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make a, ask a question, um, in section two. Number eight.
This is the word, two or five, or?
You're referring to section two and A of the ordinance, twelve?
Well, actually, yes.
Okay.
Actually, it's, uh, section B. Of section one J above, that is for the splash pad, funding for the splash pad.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's seven mills, living for all taxes, for real, and personal property.
Wait a minute, you skipped around, so where, where are you asking?
I'm asking.
This one?
Yes.
Okay, she's on section two V.
The tax necessary paid to debt service on the city's trust, Geo bond.
The seven mills was to pay the Geo bond that was issued in two thousand and twelve, and that bond went for the construction of, and renovation of this building, a small portion for the splash pad, and a portion for renovations at Pride Park in two thousand and twelve.
Satisfied? Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Madam Finance Director. Um, hearing done, all in favor of ordinance forty-one ninety-eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, first reading of ordinance forty-one ninety-eight has passed. Item ten on the agenda, first reading of ordinance forty-one ninety-nine, the manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance amended the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen fiscal year general fund budget.
Okay, um, for the reading of ordinance forty-one ninety-nine, the chair will entertain any motions to approve first reading.
Make a motion, pass ordinance forty-one ninety-nine.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on ordinance forty-one ninety-nine? Okay, hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The ordinance passes. Does your, does your copy say one fire cut, 'cause ours has two on here, is that a typo?
You get two without a "m" out.
If there's anybody that can do it, that trail back there can get it done. Just making sure that he's still awake back there.
Listen.
Finance Chairman. I'm sorry, excuse me. I did not, I, I did not mean to, to, to direct that, that response to the Finance Director. I should've gone through the Finance Chairman first, Mr. Chairman. It's okay?
Sure.
Per se. Okay, um, item eleven on the agenda, first reading of ordinance forty-two hundred.
Assistant ordinance to amend Hartsville City Code of A zoning, Chapter seven, signs and advertising devices, Section seven, signs permitted in central business district B one, subsection I.
Okay, um, you've heard the reading of ordinance forty-two hundred. Uh, the chair will entertain any motions.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we pass ordinance forty-two hundred.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This is to give two signs instead of one, fifteen good signs, late sign per story.
On buildings of two or more stories.
Right.
With equal and opposing entrances, so, um, I'm not quite sure of the technical definition, but, um...
Fifth Street, Caroline Avenue, Fourth Street.
Well, I mean, if you're asking for like specific references where this would apply, the, uh, the new hotel, the Mantissa, has equal and opposing, um, entrances, and the idea is that we're trying to develop a city that is, um, livable, walkable, and accessible. And so we want to encourage people to use parking in the back of buildings, and so the thinking is that the back entrance is equally as important to the front entrance. So there was some discussion from planning whether one, the back sign should be smaller, and I'm glad to see that the recommendation is that they should be equal, because in our eyes, they're just as important. So that's what the change is, okay?
And if, as the summary says, it's for ARB passes, is that the recommendation?
I just want to make sure I understand correctly.
That's right, okay, um, and the recommendation is fifteen square feet per story. So, um, all in favor signify by saying aye, and opposed by nay, the first reading of the ordinance passes. Item twelve on the agenda, resolution five dash fifteen dash oh one, a resolution for approval to engage Uptown Services LLC to perform an FFTP feasibility study. Is there such a motion?
Which part?
Well, Jim and I were having a debate on if it's FTP or FFTP. It's listed both ways.
FTP, I was to the premises.
To the premises?
Yes.
Okay.
How, did we do this when you were first in office, ma'am?
It's been so long ago, I can't even remember that far back.
I mean, refresh your memory, we've been down in Detroit once.
Yeah, we have.
What's changed that would allow us to do it now?
Um, well.
I mean, we had increased the population, not to the drawback of last time.
So let me, um, let me speak to that then. So what's changed, the Counselwoman asks, is why are we in a different situation than we were six years ago? Six years ago, we were in a great position to provide, where the city would provide fiber. And the short of it is, the, the thinking that we have in this wonderful, small, progressive little city is that, um, what it, like, your interest is economic development, generating jobs, and keeping revenue within the city. So that's what the intent of fiber to the premises, or what we call loosely fiber to the home, was, is that the city could run fiber to the home much like a utility that we've given away, and we would be essentially creating new jobs in Hartsville, and instead of sending the money that we now pay for that fiber, so cable, telephone, uh, television, uh, internet, instead of sending that to Charlotte or wherever these, these mega corporations are headquartered, we'd actually keep that money within the city limits. So it'd be an, an economic development engine, if you will, for us. What we're asking here is to look at a feasibility study, because when we first applied for fiber to the home, a few things were happening. One, the conglomerates were fighting to change the laws in the states. And if you recall, we spent two years with our senator working to carve out an exemption for Hartsville, South Carolina, which I think was very, um, very important. What it meant was that Hartsville, South Carolina, is the only municipality in the state that would have the ability to run this like a utility, to provide fiber to their residences. To paint you the broader picture, um, for all of you that are sitting here going, what in the world is he talking about? Can you imagine going home because you can't get out of your house? And watching the Red Foxes play on Channel Two? Or that your children, who are at home, who don't have access to internet, would have more affordable access to higher-speed internet than was previously available to them? So it impacts education, um, it impacts quality of life, it impacts economic development. One of the main things that anyone in economic development in the last decade will tell you is Hartsville could surely stand to have a call center. We've got a qualified workforce that would love to, to have that. And in our opinion, um, those of us that are in support of, of this type proposal, we believe that we could provide better services, create more revenue, keep those jobs here, and, uh, potentially reduce the need to increase taxes by providing these services. And they're higher-quality services than we currently receive now. So to give you, to give you the broad stroke, um, some of the schools now struggle for kids to get time on the internet, and they struggle with the bandwidth that they're allowed to use. And so we're talking about going from high-speed, which right now they call a Volkswagen, a Ferrari. It's not the case. A Ferrari exists, and you guys probably have read about it, and I'm not here to preach about this, but for those of you that know that Google Fiber is coming to North Carolina, they're bringing, um, a hundred meg service, which is blazing fast, for the same price that I'm paying right now for the Volkswagen. So the idea is that now that FCC has changed their position, the Federal Communications...
Commission.
Commission, has changed their position, and they believe that municipalities should be able to provide these services. So what we worked on for two years, we weren't able to take advantage of, and we were greatly appreciative to, uh, to Senator Lloyd for his help on that. However, the federal government now thinks that this is a great idea. And so what we'd like to do is, we'd like to see what it would cost to provide these services just to the city, because when we initially proposed this grant, it was to serve the underserved areas, which is half of, half of Hartsville, all the way up to Lamar. Now, in the, in the agreement we made in the, in the Senate negotiations, was that we would relinquish our rights to, to serve, um, we would, we would trade off the other half of the city to just focus on Hartsville, because our obligation is to, um, to serve the city. So we don't know what those numbers would be, and the fifteen million dollar projection that, that we had back then, which was to serve a pretty broad area, now could be a lot less, because Hartsville is more dense than serving up, out in the country to Lamar. So we'd like to find out how close we really are to being able to provide this type of infrastructure. And this piggybacks off of, um, the discussion that we're having is how can we bring added value to our businesses that exist in the downtown area by providing, um, Wi-Fi to our retail base downtown? So that is the bulk of it. And I didn't mean to take that long to explain it.
And you're, Mr. Mayor, would that include the, um, not in the city, outside the city?
No, ma'am, this, this study would just include the city limits. Yes, ma'am.
And you got to pay another fee?
Another fee? Yes, ma'am, yeah, absolutely, we do. And that fee is?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight? Okay, so it's come down from thirty, how about thirty?
Three thousand.
And I think we can, you know, it's up to most thirty-one. I, I think he did three thousand travel last time, and we didn't use that, or did we? All right, so, um, there are no motions on the floor, if my memory serves correct.
I don't think there was one.
Oh, is there? Oh, wonderful, I'm sorry, no discussion, I'm getting way ahead of myself. Um, is there any further discussion about the feasibility study? Or is there any concern, and I want you guys to be honest, you know, we're asking you to spend a considerable amount of money.
Is there a concern? Of course there is. I mean, if we know for sure, it's a sure thing, I'm all in, but if it's not...
Well, sure thing.
Fifty thousand, my first time doing it.
Yeah.
And now another twenty-eight, that's a lot of money to be telling no.
Well, I'd make the argument that if we passed it the first time, we would've been funded, because we made it through three rounds of due diligence, and the funding ran out. Because council didn't act on it when, when it was first proposed, and that's the privilege of council, um, you know, we could've been sitting in a, in a different place than we are right now. Is there a risk? Absolutely. At some point, we've got to figure out where to get whatever it costs to do that from. You know, I'd make the argument to, uh, some of the foundations that exist, that the ability to provide this as a wheelhouse of, take the Barley Foundation, for example, because it touches on every major tenant of what their mission statement is. I mean, it runs the game, education, economic development, quality of life, you name it. It impacts it in ways that, that I can't even put together. And so when I was, when I was illustrating, how would you like to sit at home and watch the Red Foxes on live television? That's not even taking into consideration the opportunity for someone like Ace Hardware to run a commercial on a local capital audience, which generates revenue, additional revenue for the city. So this thing becomes an engine, a lot like water and sewer, which is our only proprietary fund, which actually generates revenue in excess of the splash pad. Is that accurate, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Finance Director? So we're looking for ways to invest that return revenue.
One of the things that I'm looking at, and if you go over into the proposal, they're highlighting some cities, and, and some of these cities are larger than Hartsville, some of them are not, not much larger, there's a city, a town in Tennessee with nine thousand homes. And, um, they give you some projections about, you know, what percentage of those homes are utilizing the city service there, and, um, you know, their profitability there. And item B there, once you get in it, they're generating revenues of, sure, and have been all damn. So it's not a done deal, it's, it's a, a deal that you study. But, um, it is a, an opportunity, and broadband is where it's going. Even, there's a lot of shakeout now, you know, um, in the broadband industry. So the city could find another revenue stream, uh, for us.
There's nothing that we do in the city that generates revenue again, other than water and sewer, and the splash pad. And we said six years ago that what we were gonna do was we were gonna focus on investments that return on their investment, whether it was cash or quality of life, and this would hit both, potentially.
Is there any, if, if you did discuss it, that would just be called a city land, the population of...
Yes, ma'am.
Seven, seven, eight, something like that. Futuristic way, if there was a, uh, would there be an Alex citizen, wait?
Oh, I, I don't know how to answer that.
Probably Alex, because our exemption is all those things.
Well, the exemption doesn't matter anymore because of the FCC ruling, so, you know, it gets into the whole discussion of can we provide services where they're not being provided beyond their limits? I can see your wheels both churning, I'm gonna ask you to comment on it. Let me just say, I don't know. Potentially, sure, that's a, that's a bridge to cross, but for this conversation, let's just assume that it is for the improvement of city services alone, because I don't know how to answer the second part. My hopes would be absolutely, but, um, the mayor pro tem in me says, you know, this is something that is supported by the taxpayers that live in this area, and they should be the ones to benefit from it, because potentially, as you generate three million dollars in revenue, um, optimistically, that's three million dollars in tax increase that you don't have to go through, and we no longer are in the position of cutting services to try and balance a budget every year.
And one, one thing also, um, the state of South Carolina, when they're looking at local governments, they're pretty restricted on what we can do. There aren't a whole lot of options for, for finding new revenue, and we're all tax adverse, so that's not an option. And, and this is something that would be a service, and it wouldn't be mandatory, it'd be, you know, you think you're getting a good deal, and you think you're getting a good price.
For once in a lifetime, we would be getting back a utility that we gave up. And I know we didn't technically give this up, but if you look at Camden, which is an electric city, they still own their utilities, and even though they don't traditionally operate like a utility, they still generate revenue based off of their, their poll. They created jobs because their people will fix them. And this is very much in that same vein.
And I'm thinking, I have not visited Wilson, North Carolina, or perhaps you have, but I think the nearby great example is Wilson, North Carolina, and they carved out a pretty good exemption for themselves, and have done real well. They're one of the first ones that have been successful in doing this.
Salisbury, and as well. And as Google Fiber comes to... And as Google Fiber comes to the Research Triangle and potentially Charlotte, the real question that we ought to be asking as a country even is, how do we impact rural cities? Half of, you guys are going to roll your eyes and say this, but half of South Carolina cities are under 1,000 in population. It's easy to solve problems in Columbia, and Greenville, and, and Spartanburg, and Charleston, because they are so massive and so dense. You can spread that tax base out a lot of ways, but when you're supported by, you know, 7,500 taxpayers that are paying for 35,000 people to come in daily, you know, that's a, that's a tough position to be in. And the real question is figuring out what keeps people, places like Bishopville, South Carolina, from going under, is how do we solve that problem in small town America? And this, I think, is one of the ways that we could do that. Now, light rail happens to be the other, so I don't think I'm going to win that argument today.
Mayor, I, I think that would be a very good use and a source of revenue for the city, because in South parts of area, we're upside down in taxes.
And that's, that doesn't even, that doesn't even speak to, you know, how do we increase opportunity?
Can I tell you from a point, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. You know, when you speak of the 3.5 million dollars, that's not 3.5 million dollars that can come over to the general fund. I just want to make sure there is a little bit of clarification. Just like Water and Sewer Fund generates 5 million dollars in revenue, there are definitely limitations as to what can come over to the general funds. I just want to make sure that was...
What does revenue do, and then you've got to take that revenue and run the service?
Right, because you do. You're going to have, you're going to have operating costs, and you're going to have capital expenditures, which you're going to have to account for. And so you would potentially look at a franchise fee.
But there will be a franchise fee, so you will be pulling one back in.
Yeah, franchise fee is an overhead, but, but not to the tune of, you know, if you made 3.5 million dollars of revenue, you wouldn't be looking at 3.5 million dollars coming over to the general fund. It would be a fraction. An example would be out of Water and Sewer, 5 million dollar revenue, you're probably looking at $700,000 out of the whole 5 million that actually gets to...
But it'd be 700,000 more than we generate now, and that's the point.
I just wanted to clarify.
That's what I'm saying. I'm looking at upside down this part.
Sure.
Of South Hartsfield and taxes.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, you asked for certain honesty, please. My biggest fear, the light that you portray, all positive.
Yeah.
I'm in on those bullet points. My biggest fear is, how do we compete against our existing cable company? And then if we do, and we get our infrastructure in, and they lower their rates, and we're left with that millions of dollars, what do we do then?
So you bring up a very valid point. There are cities that have failed. Every time I mention fiber to the home, somebody sends me an email with a couple of cities that tried it, and it didn't work. So I would be lying to you to say that it's just a magical pill that we swallowed. I think that the person that wins in the end is the consumer, because then it becomes a competition of businesses. Who provides better services? Who buys into the fact that we're spending our money, and it is staying in Hartsfield specifically? And the people that we hire live in Hartsfield specifically. So when people buy into that, even if a price war ensues, and that happens, in Wilson, North Carolina, it happened, as it turns out, the major competitor at Wilson, North Carolina, is selling bulk fiber to Wilson, North Carolina. They're winning even though they're losing, right? I think that's good for the, for the consumer, because now they're paying even less than the market would bear. You know, you're asking, how do you still float that, that loan or bond? And we haven't even crossed that stream. If we got back a feasibility study, and it said, because of the density, and because of, of the increase in technology, it would only cost us $5 million, I'd tell you, that'd be the easiest risk to make. And I'd go find the, the first person I knew with 5 million and say, this is the best loan you can make. If it turns out to be 15 million, and nobody's going to touch it, you know, the money will have been spent, but it's, it's, it's a risk with opportunity cost involved. So I mean, you're never going to find out if you don't spend the money. And if it works out, the best case scenario, you're going to make a lot more money back, hopefully.
In each of these cases, you know, they've got competitors, you know, traditional cable is there, and the city's applied service is not going to get 100% of the business. And some of them are making revenue and profit with 25 or 30% penetration. So you don't have to get all of that. And if you paid attention to a lot of the merger news lately, and Comcast, and Time Warner, there's a lot about customer service there. And, and, and some of those companies don't have the best record of customer service.
Mayor, what you're saying is just for the people that live in city, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, what percentage of population do you think would want to...
So the, the last study, the adoption rate was pretty conservative. I believe it was 20% over five years. And that's, may not even be accurate, but it was, it was a very conservative adoption rate. It almost assumes worst case scenario, less than a quarter of the population decides they want the service. So I, I can't, I can't answer that question. This study will tell us what they think via statistical surveys. So they pick a survey area, and they go in and say, you know, would you be willing to buy these services if this person provided it? Who do you use it now? Do you have, well, how fast is your internet now? Would you like faster internet? All of these things. Even the ability to provide the service, let's say we didn't get the, however many millions it takes, right? Even the ability is only going to help us. Because if there, if there is leverage, that the competition is going to say, hmm, I better go ahead and invest in Hartsfield, because these guys have the opportunity. So the original argument that I made to the, to the Senate panel was, we asked them to come in and give us the best service possible, right? The fastest internet. So Google is going into Raleigh, and they're giving them the highest speeds possible. They told us, we can't do this for you, because we'll never recoup that investment. You're a small town, right? Only a percentage of your population is really going to use it. It's not a good investment for us. And we're not for the government doing services, you know, in the private sector, only in the case where the private sector says, we're not going to come to your town. We're not going to improve the services. So if anything, it gives us the leverage to, to go to them and say, we can do this. We can provide 100 meg service if, if we want. How about you guys do it instead?
If you don't get 50% of the population, you could be able to do that.
I can't even begin to answer that. I'm not, I'm not sure how that works. I mean, in the best case scenario, yeah, that'd be awesome, to sell it to other cities, but for now, I think we should just consider this to be a study. So let's move this along. I understand that there is some hesitancy to adopt this. It's progressive, and I think it paints the city in a really unique light. When I look at the, the cities that are small towns, that are up in the left-hand corner of the United States, they're always in the news because they are progressive, and they're doing really amazing things. And, you know, I spoke with the manager last night, and she said, you know, we just came back from the meeting with the Municipal Association, and everybody is beating her door down to find out, how is it that Hartsfield is doing all these amazing things, and they're only a town of 8,000? Is that an accurate reflection of what people were saying? So this is just one more thing that says, you know, we're thinking about something that no other city in South Carolina has really considered. A county, two counties have, but no other municipality is this forward-thinking. And, you know, with, with risk comes reward, so. Anyway, let's move the discussion. If there are no other questions, let's, let's move to the vote. No other questions? Okay. Everyone that is in favor of ordinance, resolution, thank you, Resolution 51501, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That's, aye, okay. It, no? Nay? One, one to send it. Okay. Thank you for your, your honesty on that. So the resolution passes. Item 13 on the agenda is Resolution 5-15-02. Is a resolution authorizing the imposition of financial policies for the waterworks and sewer system of the city of Hartsfield, South Carolina, and other matters relating Chair will entertain any motions to the duck.
Mr. Mayor, my motion to pass, excuse me, the Resolution 051502.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
By the way, what you, what you are saying, authorizes the imposition of financial policies.
Essentially, these are putting policies that most of which we already have in place, is putting them in a more formalized manner, where you guys are officially approving them and adopting them. In the past, they were not necessarily even written in, in some cases, but it sets forth policy regarding revenue and expenses, that we'll have a balanced budget. It deals with the transfers, and what is allowable between Water and Sewer Fund and the general fund. So again, it's a lot of practices that we had in place, but didn't have them in a formalized policy, and you guys had never approved or adopted a policy. So it really just kind of tightens all of that up, and it's in one place, and makes it part of legislation. So you would be the ones who would have the authority to actually make any changes to these policies.
In this year's budget, there are some transfers between U.S. Oil Company and General Funds, so.
Okay, any further questions, gentlemen? You said that? Okay. All in favor of Resolution 51502, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by aye. Resolution carries. Item 14 on the agenda, Resolution 5-15-03. Approval of a bid award from generator for the fire department.
This resolution is to be filled in. The recommendation from the fire department is not to deal with the lowest bid, so we left it blank, or council to decide which company to choose.
Should we repeat that again, please?
So what the madam said is that the resolution is, needs to be completed, that the lowest bid is not, the, the lowest bid does not contain the generator of preference that the chief would like to use. And it's my understanding this is because their franchise or dealerships, and the lowest bidder cannot sell that brand. They would prefer to have a specific brand, but it is not the, the local vendor preference.
About $3,000 difference?
Yeah, $3,000 difference.
Do we have a generator there present?
Not working.
Not working, but it's the same brand.
What is it, 25,000? Do you think? A Generac?
Yes. We currently have a Generac, and it is not working.
How long have we had that?
Chief? Oh, pardon, Madam?
That's okay. I think that Generac may have been one that we received from someone. She was...
No, we bought it, uh, probably about 12, 12 years old.
And the generator went out of service about a month or so ago, and it was found to be not able to be fixed. And so we went out and did solicited bids for a generator. The lowest bid is a Generac with our local vendor, Kelly Electrical, but the chief does have a preference as far as brand, and Kelly's Electrical cannot provide his preferred brand. And so he would have to go with generator services at $28,000 to get the Blue Star. If you want to know specifics regarding his difference between the brands, certainly the chief can answer those questions.
Chief, for the benefit of council, it may be best that you explain to them the difference in your preference.
Number one, for the vendor, we're choosing, wanting to choose, they've been serviced and are all integrated for the fire department for the last 10, whatever years, 10 years ago. We bought the Generac from another dealer. The reason is, and I'm not bashing any other product, that's what I'm not here to, the Blue Star is, got a bigger engine in it for a 60K generator. And I'll get very technical here, but I can get real tech. A Generac usually undersizes its engines for that 60K. They put a smaller engine, and up the RPMs on it, and it runs harder when it cranks and goes.
Okay. That's pretty...
So with all of the, the additional features, co-revenue, remote wireless monitor, the five-year warranty, the semi-annual state maintenance agreement, are we going to be getting into that with generator services?
Yeah, it includes, I mean, we, we, the comparison, the 25,000 to the 28,000 includes all of the reasons that they are, we're comparing apples to apples, so all of that would be included.
The warranty, are on the table?
Uh, I'm trying to get a warranty at the place. They both have the same warranty, and I can only call...
You buy the same warranty?
That's what...
It's a five-year extended, it's a...
Five-year extended warranty.
It would include a five-year extended warranty, both of them. We compared them, so they would be same warranty, same everything.
So again, I understand that accessory, necessary options from Kelly that we can see, that we don't see over on generator services, will be the same.
Park, yes, ma'am.
If they'll be the same, then I'll be okay.
How about your response to time for your maintenance, chief? With your local vendor versus whoever were installing the Blue Star? We had buying and maintenance on ours, so it's probably about the same.
No, but I'm just saying, just say, you went back to the fire station, and it was down. You called your local one, and I'd like to think within 24 hours, it'd be...
Oh, yeah, same thing. Oh, the guy that, generator services is out of Canada, they obviously told him, and we got killed right near Park. I mean, you're talking probably 15 minutes, 20 minutes every time.
So you don't think you'd be waiting for days to get back?
We don't now, when we have, when we have a problem with it, usually within, we call them that morning, we find the problem, they'll be there, a couple hours at the most.
Any further questions? It is interesting to note that their installation is double cost.
Yeah, I was kind of confused by that, because I was looking at the, the numbers for the 60KW, and we currently have 25KW Generac.
The 25K we got now, we purchased, only runs a small portion of the fire department. So into a 60K, it'll run our whole department.
Right. I just wonder why the Generac 60K wouldn't be sufficient?
I'd be up for pleasure, counsel there. I just feel like we would get a long-range maintenance out of the Blue Star prepared with the Generac. That's just my value.
Because that's our local vendor, there is none.
Correct.
Speaking to the difference in labor costs, we with Kelly, they are our electrical contractor, that's an old contractor for the city, and that's why their labor costs are so low, because we've already have negotiated rates for them for electrical services.
So we couldn't, um, did we ask for any special consideration, being that they already have that business?
That's what they gave us. Their, their, their material and labor, their labor is $3,000 versus $6,000 for the other contractors. So Kelly's was, they gave us their contracted rate.
Okay. If there are no further questions? Chair will entertain our call for vote. I have Resolution 51503.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a motion with me?
I make a motion to pass Resolution 51503. Chair second?
With the recommendation, which?
Uh, with the Blue Star.
With the Blue Star.
Okay. Another second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm just reluctant to double guess the chief here, the, you know, he's experienced and has served in the best departments.
I just want to make sure we get any same accessory option changes.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by aye. Item 15 on the agenda. Item fifteen on the agenda, resolution to adopt Jerry Thompson as a, oh, hey, you're still with us, thank you for being all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to enter executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act thirty-four dash seventy, paragraph eight, sub-paragraph one and two, for the sake of legal advice, discuss legal updates on outstanding legal issues, impending lawsuits, discussion of negotiations, incident to propose contractual negotiation, and discussion of city attorney contract. Is it such a motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All for it. Stand in executive session.